All right, we're live on YouTube. UGTV will be starting in a few minutes.
Thank you.
Hey guys, y'all ready to go? Got a big nod from Jeff and Reggie over there.
Yeah, hang on Doug, let's check to make sure we've got everybody here.
Oh, we're not ready for the meeting. I was just checking with the Public Works team about their ready to go.
Okay, good, thank you.
I was talking to them, Brett, not you. You wait till you're ready with Mayor and the Commission. Sorry.
UGTV will be starting in about 20 seconds. We're live.
Okay, well, it is five o'clock. Before I call the meeting to order, I want to announce that due to COVID-19, we have individuals attending remotely as well as onsite. All participants joining by phone should mute their phones when not speaking to avoid background noise. During the meeting, please make sure that you announce yourself by name and title every time you speak, so the public that is participating knows who is speaking. This is critical, given the number of remote participants and his current guidance from the Kansas Attorney General. I'll now call the meeting to order. Clerk, please announce the meeting and call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. You are hereby notified that I have called a special session of the Unified Government Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, to be held Thursday, April 22nd, 2021 at 5:00 PM regarding the 2021 to 2026 Capital Maintenance Improvement Projects, CMIP. Roll call, Philbrook. Philbrook. Bynum.
Here.
Burrows.
Here.
Townsend. McKeonan. Ramirez. Ramirez. Johnson. Kane.
Here.
Markley.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
Mayor Alvey.
Here.
One more time through, Commissioner Philbrook.
Here.
Commissioner Townsend. Commissioner McKeonan. Commissioner Ramirez. I see Commissioner Ramirez on there, but he's muted.
He must be having some trouble getting unmuted. When he comes on, we'll note that he was in attendance.
Thank you.
All right, so tonight we have CMIP projects. I'd ask Mr. Bach to introduce staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Commission. Tonight, we're ready to dig into one of the bigger steps of the budget process, and that's to go through the...
Doug, you just muted, just there you go.
The host muted me. We're ready, this year we're going to jump into the bigger projects that we have. We're going to walk through what we have for debt and what we have for cash. So our lineup for tonight is we're going to walk through kind of the the big picture of where we're at with projects, talk about kind of how we factor that in, the amount of money we spend in that area, the amount of money went to it. On Monday, we passed out to you the different sheets that look like this, that you're used to seeing in your budget. I can't get it out of, there we go. And they, and we'll, we'll step through those at a at a high level. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at those in a little bit more detail. And then also, we'll talk a little bit about where we are with some unfunded projects and some that are a little bit more noteworthy, that we've kind of pulled out, that we know commissioners have talked about, but they're not on this schedule because of where they've ranked out in our point scheduling, but they haven't been moved. So we wanted to just make sure those are pointed out to all of you. And then we can think about our next steps if we, what we're doing for the the next meeting. So our presentation tonight is going to be led by the Public Works staff along with Budget. Jeff Fisher, our Director of Public Works, will kick it off. Jeff, he's in the conference room, we'll let him start.
Thank you, Mr. Bach. I'll make introductions real quick. We have Debbie Johnsher, Deputy CFO on my right, and Reggie Lindsey, Budget Director on my left. We do have other staff available for later in the discussion if needed. We have Dave Reno controlling the screen. We have Robbie Anderson, Angel Ober, Troy Shaw, and John Kelly, and Sam Herr. Like Doug mentioned, we have about 15 minutes of this presentation before we hand it over to Reggie to go through the spreadsheets. We appreciate it might hold questions until we get through that. But if you have something pressing, of course, we'll be glad to entertain questions. So a few objectives for tonight and next week's workshop. You know, one is to, of course, evaluate, discuss, edit if needed, and move the CMIP forward for adoption in the budget process. As Dave Reno likes to refer to the CMIP, this is the community's value statement, and it reflects where our values lie and our priorities. And as discussed in recent past, there needs to be additional discussion about those priorities, especially regarding infrastructure for the long term. Staff, staff also believes it would be helpful to view and evaluate the CMIP at the right level globally, big picture, with the entire community in mind, and long term again. In addition to infrastructure dilemma we've been discussing more recently, there are a few key items to note tonight as we move through this discussion. One is that you'll see maintenance activities are a large portion of the CMIP. There are only truly a handful of capital projects. Two, there's refinancing, there's a lot of financing versus cash, and a little bit out of balance possibly. And then facilities consumes a large portion of the capacity of the CMIP, which is driven by the large number of buildings the UG owns, the all the, all of the facilities that the UG owns, and, and then their condition. I'll hand it over to Debbie Johnsher.
Good evening. Debbie Johnsher, Deputy CFO. Thought before we get into the details of the CMIP, we would just run through the process that we're in and talk about what we've been doing to get us to this point. So we kicked off the CMIP in January, giving departments the opportunity to submit capital improvements for the CMIP. Public Works also presented a five-year CMIP at a special session on February 25th, and we also held the first budget public hearing on March 11th. Last year, when we went through this process, we talked about the formation of three core groups for infrastructure, facilities, and technology that we are using to help us review CMIP items that are submitted. And the core groups have been meeting both with the departments and the Budget Office to work on the CMIP items. We're also updating our financial forecast. Kathleen Von Achen, our CFO, gave an update at the strategic session that was held on March 4th. And we've also been updating our financial forecast as we've made changes to the CMIP so that we can determine how that affects our debt service funds and our fund balance. Currently, we've been analyzing data, looking at the priorities, reviewing our targets, and determining feasibility of, of the projects. We've also, over the last several weeks, been meeting with the County Administrator's Office to review the targets and also review any initiatives for the CMIP. And that brings us to tonight, where we are bringing forth the CMIP document to the Commission to review and comment on any items that are included or not funded. And as Jeff said, with the goal to move forward for inclusion with the operating budget presentation.
The current inventory of, of named capital projects in the system right now to be funded by the general fund totals 60 plus. Tonight, in this five-year proposed CMIP, we have a handful in the first two to three years, and you'll notice that four of those are facilities, and then two street improvement projects. We have the tow lot, and there's additional question about that to be discussed later in the presentation. City Hall stabilization, which has been on the radar for a little while. So we get, we get to do that in 2021, 2022. Hutton Road, Leavenworth Road, intersection improvements, two fire stations with a police department facility as well, and then Leavenworth Road, next phase of Leavenworth Road. Next slide, please. The UG has two enterprise funds, one for wastewater, one for stormwater. These funds are exclusively based on user fees and rates. They are functionally different from the general fund. Wastewater is humming along and predictable, has a predictable rate schedule for the long term, and it's backed up by well-defined objectives driven by the needs of the system, and also by the consent decree with the Environmental Protection Agency and the Department of Justice. These are, this is a highlight of some of those projects. You've seen a few of these, like the treatment plant projects that are ongoing, those are very large investments. And then one in particular, I want to highlight, the asset management system renewal, that's a very large investment. That includes activities that are, that are necessary to make sure the system operates and functions properly. It, it is very much a good mo, what's a good model for how we need to do streets and stormwater. And, and so that's an annual commitment, and again, largely driven by the condition of the system and the consent decree. Next slide, please. Of course, the stormwater system, the stormwater fund is another matter, and the future is much less certain, and of course, we're engaging with the Commission currently on that. Again, the circumstances seem to make it necessary for us to work at a high level, big picture, to be systematic and global, in determining values and priorities so that the buckets of expenditures are filled and aligned appropriately in the long term. It's important that over the last two to three years that we recognize there has been an increase in investment in street preservation. With the support of the Commission, the CAO, street preservation is getting better. However, that initial investment is not keeping up with the deterioration. So we, we are keeping the 20-plus statement, the 20 million-plus statement each year. That is our target. Even though we've been increasing in street preservation, we appreciate that support. We are not doing it fast enough to keep up with the deterioration or to change the trajectory. Facilities. Facilities makes up a big portion of this. And that again is driven by the number of facilities that the UG owns, all facilities. That is a, that is a large investment, and John Kelly has already started initiating work to to study this, to understand where the opportunities might be to reduce our portfolio and reduce that necessary investment every year, so we can make room for other priorities. It's important to, on that facilities point, though, it's important to manage expectations right now. The we ha, we do have some thoughts about how we can reduce facilities and, and target some buildings, but it's going to take a little time to work through that, understand it, have the necessary discussions at the right levels to figure out best strategies for that. And so it's going to come with investment necessary to, to reduce facilities, and there's going to be some challenges. Next slide.
So some of the strategies that we are currently, we've currently been working to implement to help identify strategies in our processes are listed on this next slide. The ERP system is the Enterprise Resource Planning Solution. This was funded in the 2020 amended budget and will replace our current financial system. The current system is over 20 years old, it's outdated, there's a lot of manual processing, limited visibility, and it's not user-friendly. The current system is more modern, it will help to automate and streamline processes, give us better, better visibility to data and reporting functions. We're implementing the human capital management solution, which is HR and payroll, and the finance solution. Overall, we expect these processes will help create efficiencies within, within our operations and help to generate future savings. Next is priority-based budgeting. This aligns the budget to the organization's strategic priorities and helps create a system for ranking the projects. We had several meetings with the Commission on priority-based budgeting, and we've started the implementation. We've done prior program inventorying, costing scoring, we've worked on definitions and goals. And the departments and core groups have actually started using prioritization to help align projects with the need and our needs with the Commission goals. We're also doing aligning, we're aligning additional needs based on some of the data we've collected. We're using the data so that needs can be aligned with what the community desires. We have the community survey information, as well as Public Works has done an assessment on their facilities. They've done the IMS data with the, for the pavement condition index. All of this information is being taken into account as we set the improvements in our capital plan.
Consistent with Ms. Johnsher just described, you know, from the CAO to finance to budget, Public Works, there's been a lot of work and a lot of effort to collect data and evaluate that data and utilize it to create and build systems to help us better understand those needs and leverage needs and to make the smartest investments we possibly can. Right sizing, that's already started with fleet, been some really good work there, and now we're into the buildings. So that'll be important for our future. And then leveraging resources from pavement preservation to, to stormwater to, you know, using pavement preservation, that eight-year plan that you've seen in the last six months to coordinate activities in neighborhoods so that we touch everything we possibly can while we're in there over a year or two, and then we're done, and we limit the, or minimize the disruptions to the community. It's using WIFIA, you know, the federal loan that we've recently been awarded and really need to pursue. That allows us to leverage a lot of different opportunities and maximize its effectiveness in the Jersey Creek area, for example. So Commission's seen the next few slides here recently, and it's, it's worth going through these again for at least public consumption. We know street preservation needs a lot of attention. I've mentioned the, the interdependency of, of streets and stormwater and bridges. And it's easy and simple to remember that water is the enemy of streets. And so it's really important that the stormwater system functions properly if we're going to make serious headway on our street conditions. And then, of course, the street system's not much good without bridges. So they are very much related. If we continue to invest in the street network as we have over the next seven years, the condition of the system's going to turn into a largely poor to failed state. Really need to get serious about ramping up the investment in this infrastructure. And then similar to streets, stormwater, this is current conditions. You see some red, that's failed, and then over the next 10 years, if we don't do anything, that system is going to deteriorate to a poor and failed condition. And it would just be that much harder to get on top of the needs of that system. And it will also affect streets over that period. And no matter how much we invest, if the stormwater system's not operating at a high level, it's going to minimize the impacts of our street investments. Investments in, in infrastructure and facilities serve multiple generations, as we've discussed before. To be effective, we must think globally and long term. This slide, next slide will look very familiar. These are the buckets that we've talked about here very recently. We have updated the street maintenance commitment that we've, the increase we've seen over the last couple of years. But the needs are large, they're getting larger and more expensive. Prioritizing the buckets, supported by long-term strategies, and are critical to overcoming the dilemma. One new note for the Commission to just raise some awareness, some of you may have heard about construction costs increasing. In a few key areas, they are increasing substantially in the last year and in a particular last few months. In a few cases, 30% in the last year, and you can see even here very recently, lumber and steel increasing substantially and insulation. So it's just something to be aware of. Staff is monitoring this, looking for every, every way to mitigate these risks. And if federal dollars come in like we, we anticipate, that's this is going to continue for a while. So we need to be strategic and smart about projects going forward. So strategies, as we've discussed before, are going to be important, they're going to be necessary, but they're not going to solve the problem. We're going to need to act, we're going to need to prioritize, and we're going to need to stay committed for many years. There will, we will need to figure out how to balance the maintenance versus capital, the level of commitment for each. And we will essentially have to reinvent how we do business in this area. That concludes this part of the presentation. I'm going to hand it over to Reggie Lindsey to go through the cash debt spreadsheets along with the unfunded.
If I may, I see Commissioner Bynum has a question. Jeff, maybe you can field that before we go to Reggie's section.
Sure.
Thank you. I have two quick questions, one of which is going back to the slide with the stormwater dots.
Yes, ma'am.
Refresh me in the community, the red indicating failing.
Sure.
Example of failing stormwater.
Right. Curb boxes, it's probably the most visible, and then curbs. Your curb inlets, as they deteriorate, will turn in this visual red. Things you cannot see are pipe conditions. You know, those are out of sight, out of mind kind of thing, but culverts and, and piping deteriorate over time too. And those have to be maintained and replaced, lined, you know, whatever the appropriate action is, but those are examples of deteriorating stormwater systems.
Okay. On your, I think your last slide, give us an example of of capital versus maintenance.
Good question. Policy, according to policy, anything under 50,000 is, or anything over 50,000, I should say, is capital. As you know, recently, we've been elevating that sort of that 200,000, so we don't really rank or score anything that's under 200,000. The maintenance, examples of maintenance, you know, there's, there's a range from minor to major, and so street preservation is example of major maintenance. And then sort of the daily facilities activities like working on HVAC unit or replacing a roof, you know, some of that activity is really just maintenance. And so there, it's a little bit fuzzy in, in our CMIP between the maintenance and capital, but a capital project technically is something that has a well-defined scope with a start date and an end date. Most everything else is maintenance.
So a capital project would be a juvenile justice building, or a fire station, or a police station, that sort of thing.
Correct.
Thank you.
Or Leavenworth Road, you know, things like that.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to go through the capital schedules for debt, cash, and unfunded projects. So on the screen, what we have are our six-year scheduled projects. Current schedule we're looking at are our, our debt projects, and they start out with the city debt. And so within the city debt, we have streets, and within streets, we have rehab and we have maintenance. Some of the larger projects within maintenance are our annual concrete repair program, and then our annual pavement preservation program, and then also our Hutton and Leavenworth Road intersection reconstruction project or maintenance project. And then as we move into rehab, rehab and reconstruction, we can see some of the larger projects are our 47th Street, complete street improvements. And then as we move into the next section, we have bridges.
Interrupt you for just a second, and I don't know if you have control of this or Dave, but when, when Reggie calls them out, would you use the cursor to point to the line that he's pointing to? That way they can see the 21 now? Yeah, like that, thank you. Go ahead, Reg.
And then under bridge repair, we have where we're spending $300,000 from 2021 to 2026. And then as we move to the next section in traffic engineering, a large project there is a priority traffic signals at $800,000 a year, running it from 2021 to 2026. Our next section on the next page are our facilities projects. And so within facilities, we have our building and logistics projects, we have our fire projects, and then we have like some police projects. So starting out with the building and logistics projects, the large project there is a two and a half million dollar city hall structure study and stabilization. That's two and a half million dollars for 2021 and 2022. And as we move into fire facilities, we're spending $6.3 million this year on a new fire station. And then out in 2024, we start the construction of another fire station. And then we wrap up in 2025. And as we move down into the police totals, we have where we're going to have a new fire station and, or we're going to have a police department that we're going to build with one of the new fire stations, the one that's slotted out in 2025. And or we're going to have a police department that we're going to build with one of the new fire stations, the one that's slotted out in twenty twenty-five. And then we also have the CSI lab at one point six million dollars. And then we have additional million dollars in for the police tow lot. And then one of the parks and rec projects that we have uh, moved down to the next section is four hundred thousand dollars. And then five hundred fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-two. So on the next page here, we have uh. Sewer system projects. So we have the Walcott expansion that is funded for this year. Ten million dollars. And then after that one, after we fund that in twenty twenty-one, we move to twenty twenty-two. Where we have asset management system renewal, which comes in at ten million dollars in twenty twenty-two. And basically what that is is um, just helping us get an asset plan together before we run up on emergencies within our system. Then the next group of projects are our stormwater utility projects. And on the next page, uh, we started our public building commission, which are county projects. So this year we have funded a Ford courthouse, uh, one point seven million dollars in improvements. And then in twenty twenty-three, we have two point three million dollars of improvements, which include plumbing. We don't have anything slotted for twenty twenty-two. As we move down to the special revenue uh, projects, we do have uh, Northeast Patrol Station that is out in twenty twenty-four. And then also Interstate seventy internal diagonal with three point seven million dollars in twenty twenty-one. And the next section are grant-funded projects. And then we're going to move over to the cash projects on the next page. So one of the things that's uh, noticeable here is in twenty twenty-one and. Original budget in twenty twenty-one amended budget, uh, you can kind of see there are a lot of things that weren't funded and this was due to going through. Corona coronavirus pandemic, where we had to wipe out our capital. But we did work to replenish that funding this year. So you can see in the column twenty twenty-two. Where we have built budgets back up for twenty twenty-two and we actually did put some funding in twenty twenty-one in some places. But starting out, emergency management, we have a replace the uh, radio system, private radio system that we currently have for the whole county. And so we're looking to fund like a million dollars from the city. Possibly uh, from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six. And then down in general services, I would disparity study. Uh, this is to give everyone equal access to business opportunities. And then as we move down, um, we've seen the police department, we have vehicle and body worn camera. And basically what this is funding is services for our body cameras and data storage and equipment that's needed for the infrastructure of that. As we move down into the public works section, one of the uh, larger projects there is a fleet center resurface that's in twenty twenty-three. Moving to the next page. They have public works. Basically have a facility right size and study that Jeff had mentioned. A little earlier in his presentation. And then we can see uh, the blue line there uh, says one ten city general fund. So this is a total of all the city general fund projects that we're paying cash for. As we move into the next section, this is consolidated parks general fund. One of the larger projects that we have there is a Windai County Lake Rock Wall replacement. Eighty-two year, eighty-two year old rock wall that needs replacement. It had collapsed seventeen years ago. Moving to the next page. And we're moving into the county general fund. And these are some of the projects that are happening within the county general fund. One of the ones that I will point out in the middle of the. Page is uh, elections office. They have parking lot improvements over there, fifty thousand dollars, and we also have split another fifty thousand dollars. Over into the elections levy fund, so or a total of a hundred thousand dollars. And then right up under that, we have two million dollars to uh, replace our countywide radio system. And I referenced that in the city general fund. Earlier in the presentation, uh, so we have a total of three million dollars slotted for that from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six. And then there's another piece for the disparity study to pay for on the on the county side that we've allotted a hundred twelve thousand dollars. So on the next page. We see we have the county general fund and we can see the totals there. And we can see where we jump up in twenty twenty-three to two point six million dollars, and that is because of the radio project that I referenced. And you can kind of see we stay up in the up over two and a half million dollars all the way out to twenty twenty-six. And going to the next page. We move into the dedicated sales tax. And one of the things that we were able to do here in the dedicated sales tax is our annual pavement preservation, which is up under public works. We were able to add six hundred thousand dollars uh, into this budget, so we're able to spend six hundred thousand dollars of cash and take from debt. And this also allows public works to be more flexible in the type of work that they do. What happened this cash, when we debt things, um, they have to go through a little more stringent process to get the work done they need. Move to the next page. So we have a tourism fund here and uh, significant projects here is the uh, Rock Island River Bridge at two million dollars. It's in the twenty twenty-one budget. As we move to the next page. We start to go through some of the our enterprise funds, so we can see where we have sewer system. Basically spending eleven point eight million dollars in twenty twenty-one and. Kind of stand around the same level. Out for this whole six years and we do jump up to the fourteen million dollars in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. And then we have the public levy, uh, where this is funding that goes through, goes towards the park at our public levy. And you see you have thirty-eight thousand dollars available for twenty twenty-one and ten thousand dollars each year. That comes from developer uh, there. The next, on the next page. Where of our stormwater utility fund. And so one of the things that we're showing here is that our stormwater utility fund, we have a target. Dollar amount and we have a dollar amount that we need to spend. The amounts that we need to spend. We can't reach them because the fund is unsolving and we don't have the funding coming in. So if we can, you look at twenty twenty-two, and we have like three million dollars of spending that needs to happen. But we only have a target of eight hundred thousand dollars just because of the revenue that's coming in. Uh, so that puts us at two point two million dollars over what our targets are or over our budget otherwise. And pretty much is, uh, if we don't have the revenue coming out, we can see that. We don't have the funding to do projects within this cash fund all the way out to twenty twenty-six. So we're about sixteen million dollars in the hole, if you look at the six-year total. So moving on to the uh, next page. Pretty much we can see that some, we have like our capital projects fund. And we have body cameras there and we have some stadium stadium facility improvements. This is funding that is just carried over from prior years that we will be spending this year. And Dave, I guess you could um, bring up the unfunded slide, please. So slide we're looking at now are basically our dead projects that we have that don't have enough funding this year or don't have funding at all. Uh, so Jeff, he referenced the buckets of funding that he needed for uh, street preservation and concrete program and bridge. So we have funding, but we don't have adequate funding for all the projects that public works needs. So what we have here in the annual concrete repair program. Is the funding that we don't have set aside for uh, public works with within our budget and that we had to unfund to have a successful program. And the same with the annual pavement preservation program, uh, twenty million dollars. We we could not fund, so we have it here in a in the funded. And then also our annual bridge repair at thirteen million dollars uh, for the six years going out to from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six. And then uh, we also have our court services building. We need to replace the plumbing there and do a lot of other things. But we we chose unfund that this year. And then we also have the. New animal facility control. We we don't have funding for that at four point three million dollars. That we were looking to fund ourselves, and then we also have four point three million dollars that we're looking for in grants for that. Which makes that a total of eight point six million dollars. Then our other project that we haven't funded is our Quiet Zone that's out in twenty twenty-four. Dave, you can bring up the direction needed slide, please. So tonight, we're looking.
I'll jump in here, Reggie, I think to cover this piece. Doug Bach, county administrator. So. Few of these projects, as we've talked through this to to point out, you know, all the things that we've built into the budget, which we believe are in keeping with the direction we've had from the commission, though. I'll start off, you see the uh, police CSI crime lab. That one is on the spreadsheet. Um, I don't believe the commission has given us the direction to say that is a priority. We want to put that in. That is one that the police department has brought forward, requested it. Though I wanted to set it out and make sure that was something we wanted to put in. It's it is a project that would go forward in coordination with the tow lot. But the commission has not given the direction on that, so unlike all the other projects that are built into that, we've had a lot more conversation on those over the time. The radio replacements, that's another big one, as you see, that starts out there in twenty twenty-three, and I'll I'll want to make sure and characterize that correctly. We are not replacing the the whole system in the sense that the towers and all that that we built here. We got into that and started that project almost a decade ago, you know, um, that's all intact. What happens through that, the course of it is they change out the radios, um, and. Kind of like every ten years or so, they just make us do a completely revamped where we're at, so we will need to start replacing all the radios in our system. Um, and that's why we build that in at about three million a year. It's a very large cost center. It's kind of like an ongoing expense. It'll. Go through, we're trying to spread it out and then it comes back. Animal services, we've brought this project to you before. Um, there's really two opportunities within it. One is to go. Near the current animal services facility, build up a for about a four and a half million dollar facility there that would be more of a shelter. That would give us the expanded space we need for operating day to day, so we would not reach a point as frequently as do now where we cannot pick up animals. Because we don't have a place to put them. Our people down there do a real good job of moving them out, but we can't move them out immediately. Sometimes it takes a week or two to to move through the the pets that are in, um, but we just need more space. The the larger project is the one when we add the other four and a half million to it is more of the adoption center and and many of the other amenities that can have a profit center. Based in behind it, but it's also it, it's a lot bigger project. Streetlights, that's a thirty-five to fifty million dollar project in the community. It would certainly provide a a higher quality of look in the community. We would be. Have less lights go out throughout the course of the year. We go to an all LED type system. We would be able to control lights. We'd be able to dim them down at certain times of night, have them increased back up depending on what our desire is in certain areas. With the LED, it's also a very controlled light, so you're not throwing as much light up into the sky. You're keeping it down into the community. This would provide a direct savings back to the Board of Public Utilities. As you know, we do not pay the BPU for. The electricity it takes to run the lights, so this would re, while it's not a savings for the unified government, it is a savings for the community. Um, and the and the the ratepayers in the community, because they will not have have a percentage of what they go into paying for as much in the cost of lights. Quiet Zone Phase Two, um, that's been out there kind of in out years. It's taken us quite a while to get through phase one and we're finally. Seeing the light at the end of the tunnel with that one. Um, we believe it's going to be installed this year as we've had very good interaction with Union Pacific Railway. Though whether or not we would plug this next phase of that down the road or down the rail, I should say, into the the budget, um, well. We thought that warranted discussion to build it in. And then, of course, the biggest one that's number one on our agenda, every our survey list, every time we issue it out. Spend more money on streets. And as Jeff has told you and going through this. This is a, you can hit this at any number, can add a million, can add five million, can add another ten million, you know, so I mean. We need to add more money into this area. This is one of those where you're deciding now what the community is going to look like in the next decade. You wait ten years until everything's red on that map and it's going to be pretty bad. So this is a high area of emphasis. We've been pointing this out and we put a little bit more money to it. I highly recommend we send more money over toward our streets. Same thing for bridges. The longer we let those go, the more probability comes that. We'll have times where we have to shut down bridges for for longer stints. The number you saw in there for needed for bridges. Doesn't even account for bringing Central Avenue back back in. I think that's a study by itself, you know, to determine what the future need is. This is really those smaller bridges or smaller crossings throughout the community. So. These are some of the big ones, not currently built into the five-year plan, other than the CSI lab. It is there and. And we can move it or whatever it is per your direction, but they're. And and the radio replacement, I should say, items one and two are on there. The other ones are not built in. I, the other one, it's not on this list, but the special revenue projects that are listed. And I think you'll note that had the the Northeast Patrol Station. When we put that in a couple of years ago, the conversation around that was, well, if we come in with a retail project, we can build that in with it and make it part of it. So it doesn't hold out a piece of the fund from the general fund or debt. Was anticipated it would be built in association. So if if that's a priority and you want to build that station by itself. We need to either add more money into the budget in the future or take something out to put it in there. So while it's listed. It's listed as one of those that anticipates there would be a a revenue project coming forward with it in order to make it happen. And with that, I will open them back up to to the commission for comments and discussion, so we can clarify where we're at on things if needed or. So.
Let me ask, just kind of, uh, if you keep that slide up, actually. What, so we just first, we had the discussion today in the quarterly meeting, joint meeting between the UG and the BPU. Uh, streetlights project. Streetlights project, this is perhaps there might be some opportunity for the for federal funding for that kind of project. And and I would also would seem to me that I I don't know, but with radio replacement, again, this is for emergency system. Is that also something that might be able to be funded through federal, you know, some federal support? Or a police CSI lab? So as we look at these, and I think that's why it's so important for us as a commission to dig into these through our infrastructure review committees to understand really what we're faced with. So the presentation was great to show us what we're lacking, where we need to go. We also need to find out, go get a more complete understanding, I think, of what are possible revenue sources for these or funding sources for these. And that allows us then to maybe get a longer term view. But let's say if we, let's say we were to fund, you know, ask for more funding into for streets. We would assume then that that funding, the additional funding would go to what kind of street programs? Would it be those that are have the most deterioration? Would it be the ones that have the most traffic? Would it be the ones that would perhaps incentivize or encourage even greater development? So those are the kinds of questions, you know, I think we 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 have to answer if we're going to make prudential decisions about where or how we might fund other additional projects.
Mayor, is that a I I guess I'm looking, is that is there, you want me to answer what I can within that?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, and I I'm just gonna put this out as a comment. It seems to me that we we're going to have to dig in a little bit more. What's the timeframe?
And I guess I I probably would take to a lot of the bigger questions here are ones that the committee that's been assigned to infrastructure will need to work to answer. You know, those are what I presented to you tonight, what are on the spreadsheets are what we're what what I would be moving forward with to present in the budget at the end of June. Unless you give me direction to say, hmm, you need to go ahead and stick two million dollars more into streets. Or, you know, I want to make that animal services facility happen now, move it up. So that's saying, so what you have in front of you for the spreadsheets is is our recommendation in order to utilize the funding that we currently believe will have. And as we go through and certify the tax numbers at the in May and in the first of June, there could be some movement on that. And that's where you obviously, if we come back and highlight something, we had to take something out to value, get our budget in place, or if we have a little bit more to work with, we can, we can point that out. These other items are ones that, you know, I'd say items three through seven really come into the point of the infrastructure committee talking about that and seeing what they want to, how we might be ways for us to add that as we go into future years. And 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 the grant funding may be a way to do it. I mean, right now, when we look at that, the CSI lab is mainly bricks and mortar. Our intel back from a Thorn Run in Washington tells us not eligible. It's all about all the money and there's about technology. Maybe we can get some of that toward radio, but it seems to be more new technology. So I think we have a couple hundred thousand we might be able to go toward on the CSI lab, but not the big stuff. So that's that's my answer, and I guess that's the direction we're what I'm saying is I got to know where to go and build the budget for this summer. And then you tell us as we link our long range plan from here.
So let me ask you, just to be clear, you would ask for if the as the committees, and it's not just one committee, it'll be multiple committees brought all back to the commission. You would be looking at the some kind of recommendation, firm recommendation as to these are our priorities for infrastructure by the beginning of June?
Yeah, or well, I mean, really, for what's on the spreadsheets, I I kind of like to go through these meetings and determine if that's where we want to go unless we find additional funding somewhere. As we build that out, as we get down into May, because if I'm going to take a hit from the, if I'm going to take money from other parts of the fund, the budget to put it toward capital, that means I've got to reduce it off somewhere on the operating side. So I I need to know that as we go through the next couple of weeks into May.
All right, so you're looking for mid-May on specifically on what's listed on the spreadsheet and that there's going to be any additional funding. Then that has to be shifted around. It would take Rod Peter to pay Paul. You want to know that by mid-May?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Gail, can we, Chris Johnson?
Well, Mayor, I would love to go first, but in all fairness, I always said Townsend, okay. I was going to say there were several, there were several commissioners that were before me, so obviously I heard wrong, I'm sorry.
All right.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Commissioner Johnson. Administrator, a couple of questions. Just as you asked us several months ago, if we had particular desires with regard to the budget and to submit those in April. So you're asking the same thing directly to you or through a committee? I just want to be clear about how this is to be communicated.
Well, I would, I would ask if it's possible. I mean, if there's questions that can happen in the course of questions about what's on there, where we have the team, we can do it in the the meeting this week or the next time we come in and talk about CMIP, I think in two weeks. Those would be great environments. You could bring that up to us in between. If there's questions about that you want to talk about before we come back to our next meeting. But it's 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 helping us work through it. Kind of getting the public discussion with you all as we go through these projects would be beneficial. But we can certainly talk about them offline and then put them back and try to talk about them a little bit more in the in the coming CMIP sessions, if you'd like.
Okay, I I know there will be more CMIP for sure. I'm just not clear about this. So if you wanted our recommendations with regard, let's say for these seven or eight projects that are currently on the screen, how do we, when do we get that to you before the next C C M I P public meeting?
If you want to send me an email or call me, we can talk about it. Or if you want to get into the project a little bit more and would like to have somebody involved with this to talk, you know, from Public Works to talk through it, we can do that. That would be my request.
Okay, that's fine. Second question, with regard to numbers. For instance, if I wanted to say of the list that's there now in terms of the projects you want direction on. And I wanted to say, I think funding the street maintenance or more for street repairs should be added. Are you looking for us to give you a number? Specifically?
Well, I I mean, I think that's one where you could probably approach that in different ways, Commissioner. I mean, a number, certainly as we go toward a goal. If it's, you know, I think what happens if we pave an extra mile, you know, lane miles a year or something like that. And and maybe that's an answer Jeff could give you tonight to show, okay, so Jeff, what's the what's the number you went through earlier about the increased number we need to get to? I think we're trying to get to twenty million annually, right? So that's an additional
Correct.
Seven on top of what we're spending currently, right?
Yeah, around seven million, yes.
So to hit our goal, so we stop depleting, I mean, we get ahead. That's the time we get to to get ahead of where we are on the streets.
Okay. The other question I had, and it was touched on in one of the slides that was shown a few before this. And there was a reference made to the money that was approved several years ago by our citizenry. I think it was an extension of the tax money that went when I first came on, it's already in place, the CNIP. I don't recall, or tell me how it is that we no longer have that particular designation. I don't, I I'm not sure I missed a meeting on it, but again, that was such a valuable tool for us as commissioners to direct money to certain projects. You know, this, this is a big plan overall, the the this whole process. But when we as commissioners could direct money to say, for example, a park would getting curbs and sidewalk and they need some more. We've just lost that ability. So I'm a bit confused how we no longer have that. Maybe we do, we could have it on a smaller scale, but you know, I'd like to have some more clarity about that issue.
Okay, that that funding source was within our dedicated sales tax. And a few years ago, back when you came on the commission, there was a time in there where the commission held. And Debbie, you probably can remind me as to how much money we set aside. I think it was a total of four million or something like that, where we did it in two different chunks.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so we did like two million and I can't remember the years, but like in two thousand twelve and two thousand and then
Believe it was twenty twenty thirteen and twenty fifteen were the two issues. And it was two million, two million a piece split out between the different districts.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. So that so we put the two million in each one, we divided that chunk up and say, okay, district gets the divisible number of dividing out that that way. And I think we did it by the, I can't remember if we did it by the eight commission districts. And set it out there for the you to be able to directly allocate towards some projects. So since that time, and and I know we didn't, we didn't want to allocate it, so we put so much in a year. We didn't want to go beyond the point of when that fund ran out. We could not commit it beyond that. So we, of course, we have that divvied out into different funding expenses between the police, fire and neighborhood infrastructure now. But that would be a matter of reprioritizing where that money is expended, Commissioner, and if you wanted to to put it to a different source.
Okay, so a and I thank you for the explanation because it was already in process when I came on the commission. But it was a great tool to be able to use after I came on in twenty thirteen. So I was just wondering why, since we have had that dedicated sales tax approved again through votes several years ago, why we are not doing that again? Maybe on a smaller scale, but I would like to have that conversation again, so it would be easier for me as a commissioner and others to make sure that some of these smaller projects don't get overlooked as well, so.
Who should remember us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Jeff and staff for the presentation. And I know this couple, a week, a month or two ago, we got a a very grim picture painted for us and what we needed to do for our infrastructure. And so thank you for continuing to bring this forward and to make sure that we, as a governing body, stay on top of this and come up with a strategy. I have a couple of questions. The first, the first question, I believe Angel will be able to help answer this. It was a while ago that I asked for when it become, when it came to the parks restrooms, the schedule of which restrooms would be renovated for each year. I don't know if someone has that on hand or if I can, someone can send that to me of which restrooms are going to be renovated each year.
Commissioner Ramirez, this is Angel. I can get that over to you.
Okay, great, that that would be, that'd be great. Because I know, I know you and I had asked you and Jack about it before, but I I have lost that list. So I would, that'd be great if you could send it over again, that'd be amazing.
Yeah, be happy to do that. I can get that over.
Thank you. My second question, Doug, when you were talking about the radio replacement and, you know, part of the question, it says, you know, explore leasing opportunities. What? And this may be an early and very early question, but what opportunities are out there for that particular project?
Melissa, would you feel comfortable talking about some of that that we've come up with?
Sorry, I moved my pain on my Zoom meeting. So I'm I'm assuming you're referring to the radio project, correct? Yeah, so there, the state of Kansas actually has this particular item, the radios as part of their state contract. And one of the ways in which you can procure the radios is through a leasing option as opposed to a purchase option. So what we want to do is explore the different ways and means in which we could do that. And then also look at the type of mechanisms for how we recoup money from the department. So right now, Jeff's group with Public Works has been working on an internal service fund with our fleet division. And then we would be looking at a similar situation for our radios as well. So just want to explore those, see what best fit and what is going to be the most efficient and effective for the unified government going forward and keeping us in compliance with sort of the standards the regions has or how it responds and corresponds together for incidents.
And Commissioner, I might add, I mean, that there's several different, or I shouldn't say several, a couple of different things that really come into that lease option. One option enables us to get the radio and then turn them back in. So we never own those radios, but as they become older, you know, they just change them out. So we're just kind of paying a maintenance fee and you just kind of keep rotating them in and out. The other one is we take a big batch of radios up front and then we lease pay it over a term of years. So that's kind of a an evaluation we'll be doing probably over the next twelve months and figuring out what's our what's our need of how many we need to replace in the next five or six years, which is probably most all of them. Yeah, as you see, we've kind of got this strung out the budget over that whole time period. So I don't know if it'll get all the radios replaced if we do it that way, so.
And we may look at a hybrid approach based on what Doug is saying. I didn't go into as much detail as he did, but we could look at a hybrid. There may be somewhere we want to own them and step them down at the end of a lease. So there's just, there's some opportunities there for us to really maximize on how much we spend over time and try to recoup some dollars that we would otherwise have lost.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that explanation and thank you for, you know, exploring these options and finding an option that is efficient for us. And so thank you for that. That was my only question on that for the radio replacement. One last thing I I just wanted to, and I know last time I met with the mayor, I I I mentioned this with Mayor Alvey, especially, you know, with the American Rescue Plan funding that we will be receiving. I know and completely understand that guidance is still coming from the Treasury Department. We don't know how that money can be spent, but I I I I highly encourage us as the governing body and administration, if we see that some of that money, that a large amount of money can be used with for infrastructure, I would highly encourage us to look into that and see in what ways we can use that money, because that would really Cause that would really help us as a cushion moving forward. Um, and so I, I, and I think, you know, our, I, I think Congress and, you know, President Biden for signing that and allowing us to receive the stimulus money. Um, so I just hope that we keep that in mind, that when we receive the guidance and move forward on how we should spend the money, that infrastructure should be, you know, something in the forefront of our minds.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think that's a great idea. Commissioner Johnson?
Okay, great, my turn now, I guess.
Yes.
Great, let me see here. Here we go, um. Just had a, a few questions. I may come back around later on, just in to defer time to other, my other colleagues, uh, but I have, I'll ask a few of them. Can you talk about the priorities uh under the debt finance projects? I'm looking at uh line item uh thirteen thirty-four, the annual alley improvement program. Can you talk about, can someone talk about the uh strategy on, on that? I know we have a lot of alleys that need um to be a- addressed and certainly I don't, I'm, I'm just making an assumption, but I think it's an educated assumption that even at three hundred thousand dollars a year, that's not going to really get it, make a real big dent. So with that, can someone tell me what the overall strategy is relative to the alley improvement program?
I can speak to that, Commissioner. Jeff Fisher here. Started that a couple of years ago, as you said, strictly out of need, I mean, it's yeah, so, so initially we were thinking we would uh identify sort of high impact alleys, maybe alleys that were being used uh for rear parking more than others or had uh more, more users and, and then, and then based on conditions. Um, I believe even, uh, I think in the last two winters, although this last winter was may have been impossible for us to do it, but in-house re- resources, a couple of winters ago, we started getting into alleys and just generally cleaning them up and making them smoother best we could until we can get um funds dedicated to overlaying those alleys. So we're taking a multi-pronged approach to that best we can. This winter was, was pretty difficult for us to do that, but um, that, that's kind of been our approach and, and you're right, it's only going to do, based on conditions, it might, might do three or four.
And so that's not a complete overlay, that's more or less uh patching, patching holes uh and things of that nature, is that correct?
Well, that, that, that three hundred thousand would be to overlay. It's just not getting, it won't get us very many alleys depending on conditions.
Right, right, okay, great. Just wanted to make sure we were still in same place on that. Um, the, um, I'm looking at the, under sewer systems, um, item sixty forty-eight, the green infrastructure improvements. Uh, we have five million dollars allocated in twenty twenty-two. Can you tell me a little bit more about that, uh, about that? And I'm, if you already stated this, just please forgive me for re-asking the question.
No, I don't believe we have spoke to that. Uh, if Troy Shaw is still on the call, I may need some help from him on that, but I believe uh, that's placeholder dollars um for a few different areas. But particularly in case we pursue the WIFIA funding and Jersey Creek area. Um, but we are, we've been, staff's been developing a gr- uh, green infrastructure strategy and policy that really is going to require some backing from Stormwater as well. Um, but, but I believe that if Troy's on the phone, are you there, Troy?
Troy is on the phone, Jeff.
Troy, can you speak to that any more clearly?
Yeah, I can, I can give you a little bit of, so yeah, Jeff's, Jeff's correct. Um, part of that is related to the uh consent decree for sanitary sewer and I O C P. Um, and then it also relates to the WIFIA uh funding as well, so um, there's, it's kind of the green infrastructure is how, a, a way to solve a lot of, a lot of the concerns we have in one chunk and we're still programming that out and planning that. Uh, I think we've been, uh, water pollution control and engineering have been looking at that over the last few years, and then I think in twenty-two and on, we'll start to implement some of those um plans that we have, so that's, that's kind of the gist of it in coordination with the WIFIA and I O C P um and the consent decree.
So would that, would that be spoke, uh, focused on Jersey Creek or is that going to be um, uh, uh, community-wide at five million dollars?
Uh, there will be plans for, it, it's, that five million is not necessarily for Jersey Creek. Um, a portion of that would probably, would likely go to Jersey Creek if we get the WIFIA and other opportunities um to help supplement that, make a, a better project in that area as well. But I think um the gist of it, that, that green infrastructure is made to spread out throughout the entire community, but you're right. If, if that WIFIA comes up and we can utilize some of the green infrastructure, make a bit, bigger, better proj- project and a bigger impact community, um, that is definitely going to happen.
Yeah, Commissioner Johnson, that's one of those areas that we spoke to earlier when we talked about leveraging resources, so, or and opportunities. So if we're going to pursue WIFIA, then of course, we're going to leverage uh all that we can towards that Jersey Creek area.
Right, right, okay. Um, just a couple more and then I'll, I'll yield the floor, Mayor. Uh, um, the, the safe routes, I'm looking at under grants, uh, item uh thirty thirty-seven, the safe routes to schools that is slated for uh twenty twenty-one, is that going to happen? And the reason why I'm uh, uh, highlighting that is because the cost has increased. Um, from my recollection, at least five to seven hundred thousand dollars from when we originally uh had this slated. And I'm sure that's just because, you know, the increasing value of construction over, uh, concrete and whatever over time. Um, is that going to be done this year? I got, just, I guess the reason I'm asking that is I just want, don't want that cost to continue to increase.
Yeah, th- this is Troy Shaw County engineer again. Um, yeah, that's, so that project, the number you're seeing there is, is the grant funding that we receive. Um, so that is not U G money in that line item, that's a grant funding. Um, and that project is under design right now, um, it's a K dot project, so it will bid, I believe, late this year. Um, so once the K dot typically, how they do their project, their fiscal year runs out in October, I think is the end of their fiscal year. So it'll be bid before the end of their fiscal year and likely start construction um early spring next year.
Okay, okay, so that, that one point seven mil is, is a good number that we can expect uh for it to cost.
Yeah, that one point seven million is, is strictly the grant portion of it. I think if you go back, there's a U G funding of that too. I can't remember what it exactly is, but I'm throwing out three to four hundred thousand dollars, something like that, um, but it's back. How much, Doug?
Four hundred twenty-eight thousand.
Okay, yeah.
You can see that Commissioner on the first page under streets, under debt. You'll see there's line item thirty thirty-seven, so that's the matching U G portion of that revenue that goes with it.
Gotcha, 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 great, great. Uh, my last question is with regard to the um uh, the Northeast Patrol Station, I think Doug, you kind of answered that by and large with the strategy was, I, I, I'll be honest with you. Um, and, and of course, you know, we've talked about some potential projects uh that might be uh that we could probably leverage on this. I will say that I think that the, the um, the community of the Northeast has, has suffered a long time. This um, this community obviously has been one of the leaders in crime throughout uh the city. I think that uh in terms of overall investment uh that whether or not we find a, a, a matching or, or a, a leverage, a part, a leveraging partner, we need to make a com- uh, uh, an investment in this community. Um, and so while I agree with the strategy um that we need to find an economic development partner, I don't want that to limit us in terms of building that. Having said that, the three point five million obviously is not enough by itself. Um, and so I would like to have further dialogue about um doing a standalone project uh with the, with, with, with the caveat that our plan to find a partner is still stays in, in intact. Um, a- and, but, and also to maybe even look at moving that, that project up to twenty twenty-three versus twenty twenty-four. Uh, and so I just want to put that marker there. We can have further dialogue about that later. Um, and with that, Mayor, I'll uh yield the floor and Doug, if you or anyone has, have any, any comments on that, I, I, I'd entertain it.
Uh, and thank you, Commissioner, and I, and my main reason for pointing that out because that special revenues project is a, is a unique area that, you know, we threw it in there and I didn't want to, I didn't want that project just to one linger out there, but then move up over the years and the commission say, oh, well, let's do it. That's basically, I mean, right now, I'd have to say that's on the unfunded list. And you accurately point that out, so if we are going to fund it regardless of having an outside source of funding through the special revenues, which we will hope and work, I should say more than hope, will work on alternatives that can come in and assist this. But if that's not happening, it really needs to be prioritized to find its way into, you know, our regular building and facilities fund with the rest of those projects that are listed out there. So you're, you're right on in that point, and if that's where we, if that's where we need to go, then that's where it needs to be. It needs to be under the facilities, not to say we can't still work on project funding for it, but it would need to be in one of those other areas.
I would strongly uh encourage that. I don't know if I have much support from the, my, my fellow uh commissioners, but I, I, I think it's time for us to make that a priority. Mayor, I yield the floor. I'll be back with more questions later.
Commissioner Biden?
Thank you. Two quick things, I one hundred percent support Commissioner Johnson's comments on the Northeast Police Substation Project, and I would also suggest for our consideration that we could look at it under the same fund with which we are dedicating funding to the Rock Island Bridge in the Economic Development out of the Tourism Fund, if we are able to pair it with an Economic Development Project, so I'll just pitch that on out there and certainly we can discuss it later, but I am more than willing to join Commissioner Johnson and Townsend to work on making that substation a reality. My question for tonight is on page six of cash, if we could look at that real quick. Thank you. Under Parks and Rec, there you go, Trail Network Development, if I could have some explanation on that project that runs across all of the years for a total of seven hundred thousand.
Sure, Commissioner, I can uh help answer that question. Um, so I believe it was December, June, uh, December of twenty twenty when we brought before, I think it was four parks for this Trail Network Development Program, and we brought them before the commission. And it was decided that Clan Park would be the first um project where we started to implement this program. Um, so that's why uh you'll see it over seven years because we're only given a hundred thousand per year to be able to do this project.
Okay, I really appreciate that. I wondered if that's what it was, and the reason that I ask is because you already know that we've had a community member, I guess, bring a presentation to the Parks Board uh about the trails at Windock County Lake that need some help. So, so this listed in our C M I P is about all the other parks, the ones that we've already talked about in previous meetings and nothing to do with trail improvements at Windock County Lake Park then, correct?
Um, uh, correct, Commissioner. Uh, the, the trails that, that presentation for, from that community member are the bridle trails, and this is more of your A D A asphalt walking trails.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Markley?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I do want to go back to the, the items that you would like direction on and, and kind of talk through those. I'm guessing that the C S I lab, um, that there is some cost savings that would occur as a result of doing that project in conjunction with another project, is that accurate?
You know, currently we send out our, our work to the, well, I, I guess we sent it to a couple of areas, the Johnson County Crime Lab, I think is primarily getting our, our work now. Um, and Commissioner, I do not know that number off the top of my head, and I would say this would probably be a good one for us to bring in the Police Department and have them offer a presentation about the benefits of having our own crime lab, uh, which is one reason I wanted to make sure and point that out, that it, you all have not given direction on this.
Okay, I think, I think I would appreciate that additional information. I mean, um, ultimately, we have, in the past as a commission, we've always been looking for ways to leverage what we're already doing to um, take advantage of situations where we can save some money um on something that we're going to end up doing anyway, so I'd just like some more information, I think, on that. On um, obviously, radio replacement, we've been through that situation before with a vastly expensive project to upgrade that radio system. It is what it is. If we've got to do it to have coverage, we've got to do it to have coverage. Um, as far as the animal services, the streetlights project in the quiet zone, I think my perspective would be that we should focus on that right sizing effort, in effort to use the money saved from the right sizing to deal with these additional needs. So I'd rather us not be building new facilities right now if we're having a discussion about how to right size. But I think the purpose of right sizing is to look at, okay, then we could take that savings and use it to upgrade the facilities that we have designated as we want to keep these and these are going to remain part of our stock. So um, I would not prioritize, prioritize those projects for this budget because I think we're still working through that right sizing effort, but I think the hope with that right sizing effort is that there's some savings that can be applied toward these larger projects. Personally, my priority would be on the additional funding for streets and bridges. As a commissioner, I don't want to make the decision between how it gets split it, split between streets and bridges. I think those priorities should be based on the need. Um, so, you know, I think staff needs to figure out what, whether a bridge needer, needs repair more than a certain street. Um, that's not a decision that I want to have to make necessarily. Um, but I think that is something we should be prioritizing. We should try to commit additional money toward that. Um, and that would be my priority over anything else on this slide.
Thank you, Commissioner Philbrook.
Yes, just leave that slide up. That's perfect slide. Thank you, Commissioner, for asking them to do that. Um, so I agree with her on most, most of this. Um, but I do have a request, and that is, is that we get um a presentation given to us pretty soon from Animal Services about where we are on what's happening with Animal Services, how much of the work being done is by volunteers versus our folks, you know, that we pay that work for us. Um, and we have, we have considered um putting this out into the private sector in the past. Uh, do we want to think about that versus building more buildings? I mean, I'm just, I'm just asking all these questions because these are all hard questions and uh there's a lot of people that have concerns and still because there's a lot of little critters running loose out there. Um, and we're not capable of, of dealing with it. Don't like to have to tell people all the time that we don't have the personnel to come, to come get it, nor do we have the space to um, to take care of it. So that, that's a big thing on Animal Services and, and I'll come along with um Commissioner Markley on the streets and bridges thing because, hey, I'm not, I'm not the one that has to go through and look at all of the um reports on those. That's Jeff and his team and, but I do believe that we definitely have to figure out how to increase or shift funding, I don't know whatever word you want to use, toward um, street maintenance, maintaining and taking care of our streets. Because as, as we all know, this last winter really wreaked havoc on our streets. If we thought they were bad, this last winter really reminded us. And so I drove a bunch of streets today, down our, down our little paths that I like to call them our goat paths because they're old township roads. Um, and there is a lot of work that needs to be done, uh, mostly potholes, but I see a deterioration. So I, it's very important for our funding for our street. The quiet zone thing, I think that's something we need to look at, but I think that's to look out for the future and, and to plan that. we need to look at, but I think that's to look out for the future and and to plan that along with the railroad, you know, for two, three, you know, several years out and figure out what part they can help us play in that because that's definitely complicated as it comes through Muncie. That's it.
I'm gonna really echo. I think that I had my brothers, we would put additional funding for streets and bridges. I think these are just kind of fundamentals for economic development. It's also what people experience if you drive into a community and your streets are not cared for. It says that if the streets are not cared for, people conclude that so many other things are not being provided. So in terms of capital funding, I would think we should spend money on streets and on bridges. Commissioner Burrows.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to state that I really appreciate that the fact that the facility portfolio and the inventory is continuing to move forward. I think it gives us a a better handle as to what our overall costs are in reference to the properties that we own and the maintenance and upkeep associated to those, and if we can identify those that we no longer need or can repurpose for other uses would be a benefit. I do want to, a couple of things, if I may, I know there was talk about the infrastructure, curb sidewalks, alleys, all of those, as well as the lighting. I I believe that we have the ability internally through our staff to identify those projects that are moving forward, that we might be able to efficiently combine those issues that are out there and hopefully find some opportunity for some cost savings or cost avoidance. So we're not we're not repeating repeatedly repeatedly pulling up streets and or right of ways to address some of these issues, whether, like I said, whether they be curbed water runoff or whatever it may be, we have a tremendous amount of need in infrastructure, and I I think in in my discussions, I believe that when the infrastructure discussed, we may only be thinking about wastewater and or sewer and those things that we can't see, but there is a lot of that we can see, and it's part of the infrastructure conversations we have. And and if I may, I know the the streets and bridges, I I concur with those comments that were made. But one thing I do want to talk about is the C S I lab. I I am aware that we have the K B I Crime Lab at the Kansas City, Kansas Community College. It was a piece of policy I was able to work on in in the legislature and bring to Wyandotte County, K C K Community College. And our crime lab has to be accredited as as well as identified as one where evidentiary material is the integrity of that material is extremely important. I I might ask Doug and or staff that we have a discussion with the Kansas City, Kansas Community College to determine if it's not something that might be able to do in in association with with their development, and I'm not saying it has to be on their campus, but the additional to ensure a crime lab, having gone through the tremendous amount of effort in bringing the K B I Crime Lab to Wyandotte County, are we not getting the services that the K B I and them committed to providing us as to our police work? I'm just kind of curious. Do we know that, Doug? Are we getting the support we need from the K B I in reference to our crime lab information?
Commissioner, the the timing is the issue with K B I whenever we need something done. And I saw Misty click on, so maybe she knows a little bit more detail to that point, but typically it's the amount of time it takes to be able to get things worked through that. As you know, whenever you have something going on that we're investigating, you know, you're you're trying to move through it in the first couple of days to be able to solve the crime. And if you've got to wait a couple of months, it didn't work well. Misty, do you have more information on that?
That was just what I was going to say, Doug. I can get more information, but from talking with Casey, that was my understanding as well is just the immediate time issues that we're under.
So Commissioner, when we have the Police Department present, I'll make sure they speak specifically to that point.
Well, thank you. That was the intent of getting the K B I Crime Lab back Kansas City, Kansas, when we bought, when we lost the Bethany Medical Center in our morgue and everything else collectively, it was testing all the serum and blood tracings and and those elements that needed to be tested for for court cases. And the K B I partnered with us in Kansas City, Kansas, bring ballistics as well as DNA to our community. The I I guess I'm willing to have a discussion moving forward with the K B I in reference to them investing in additional resources in our community, because that is a partnership that was forged almost 20 years ago that I believe has paid great dividends for our community because one, it puts us on the map of having a law enforcement presence in our community of of statewide significance, and the fact that they're always looking to assist in in growing their presence across the state. So I would just encourage just to look at an opportunity to partner with the K B I and are looking at our C S I lab for our Police Department. Because I do know that between Kansas City, Missouri, Johnson County, and Wichita, we're still going to run into those time lags just from my personal experience with this issue over the last 20 some years. But there's there's a few other questions I have. What I will do is I will call staff in reference to those. I'm really pleased to see some of these numbers haven't changed much. The only other really big issue I have is I've noticed that at the bio solids is only 20 million, and if my memory serves me correct, Mr. Fisher, I thought that we had at one time was 42 million. Had had it grown to 70 million. And could could you shed some light on those numbers as to why they've just only gone to 20 million?
I believe that's a one year portion of the budget of the total budget.
Okay.
So that'd be 20. Is that 21, Sam? That's that's $21.
Yeah. So but we don't see it forecasted out to 22, 23, 24?
Not in that slide, Commissioner, not in that slide.
Okay.
And I can I can call you, talk through that.
Okay, thank you. And that brings me to my last comment. I think there was one sheet that was shown, or one slide that was shown that I didn't have a copy of that or I missed it, and it was the unfunded a portion of the debt. And I think it was one of the very last slides that Reggie displayed. I don't seem to have it, or I wasn't able to find it in my in my paperwork, so I'd kind of like to have a copy of that, if I may.
Okay, we will send that out. I don't believe that was in the packet of the items that we were we were just showing the ones we had recommended for funding, so we can send that out to all commissioners.
Well, thank you, and and thank you, colleagues, for the opportunity you've given me to ask my questions.
Commissioner Kane.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I support what Commissioner Johnson said about a police substation. In fact, Tim and I have talked about but waiting another two or three years just doesn't get it. I think we have some buildings down there that we can temporarily use until we get something built, or possibly ask one of the churches if they could give us some space to operate until we get something I feel.
Commissioner, I I don't think we can hear you very well.
Okay.
That's better.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. I already talked Johnson about a police substation down there, and we could use probably one of the buildings that's not being occupied now, or even go to one of the churches and see if they've got some space for us to operate until we can build something down there. And then the Rock Island Bridge, I asked multiple safety questions about how we were going to do if somebody fell off that thing. I've got no response. And I have another question is is I've been told that you cannot get earthquake insurance on bridges and stuff like that, so I'd like that answer. And then I want to go back to to the radios because we know we need the radios and and it's expense, safety's expensive. But we have to make sure that our people are safe, and as far as the the roads and the bridges, yes, we need to get some more money in there. And then they talked about the the sidewalks to the schools. I've got a quarter mile sidewalk to the brand new school out here, and that's it. So I'd like somebody to come in here and take a serious look to make it safer and easier for our kids to get to school, and that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I just quickly, I apologize. I didn't I had my questions and comments, but I didn't really give my thoughts on the current slide that we have. I I'll say that majority of my comments and what I believe has already been stated by my fellow commissioners. I just believe streets and bridges should be something I should be a priority for us. You know, Mr. The Mr. Mary, you you said it perfectly. You know, when someone comes to our community, they're going, the the first thing they're going to see is our streets, our curbs, and how well we have taken care of that infrastructure, because if we don't have the streets and the curves and the sidewalks as our baseline infrastructure, it's going to be hard for us to build our economic development, bring businesses in, bring attractions into the community, and ultimately bring in more people into our community so that we can increase our revenue. But I do I do support that we we get, we are provided information and presentation on the C S I lab and the Animal Services. You know, Commissioner Philbrook brought up, you know, about bringing in Animal Services, presenting to us of what they're doing, how they're doing it, and exactly what's needed. I think that's a really good idea. And streetlights, I will say, is also I, in my opinion, is up there in the priorities as well, because as if it's if the streetlight project is able to provide cost savings to the B P U, we all, commissioners, usually, as all commissioners, we know either one, two, or three top of our issue list that constituents come to us is their B P U bills. And if we're able to provide cost savings to B P U where they can transfer that back down to customers and and lower customer bills, that would be great for everybody. And so those are my thoughts, and I would also like to lend my support to Commissioner Johnson and the his police station and making that a priority and finding a way for that, especially for that area who has been historically disinvested in. I believe it's time that we do what we what we meant to do in the the master plan and do a better job of doing that. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramirez. I appreciate that final comment that you made. Matter of fact, I appreciate all the comments relative to streets and bridges. Jeff, can you remind me of conversations that we have had, one, I think, one on one with regards to the funding for streets and bridges? I think we kind of all went through an exercise where we talked about the the future needs for streets and bridges and other other items. Are those, were those embedded into the projections relative to whether it's debt or cash funded? Did you take those those, I guess, recommendations, I don't know what else to call them, and embed those into the 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 projections, or is that something that where do we stand with that those those some meetings that we had?
Well, we, when we met, we shared with you the, in the case of streets and bridges, the 20 plus million a year need and the 14 million a year need for bridges. And we aggregated the feedback we got. And it was, you know, generally, there was a lot of interest in focusing on streets and bridges, just like many of the comments tonight. And so it just sort of helped staff it added weight to C M I P proposals, right? So that's why we're talking about this again, is in those individual sessions, the commissioners agreed generally that we needed to focus on streets and bridges. And and so here we are, you know, having that discussion again collectively, and it sounds like collectively, there's, again, interest in doing that. So now it's in in my opinion, it's developing strategies to help us ramp those investments up for a sustained period of time. Does that answer your question?
Well, it does. I guess I I just felt like we gave the direction then, and I would have assumed, I guess, that we would have seen, you know, some indication in these projections as they're reflected to us tonight.
In the C M I P?
Yes.
We did plug that in to see what kinds of implications and better understand, you know, better understand what implications that creates, and there was staff discussions and, you know, obviously, like Doug has mentioned, we got to pass a C M I P in a budget this year, and so I think I don't want to speak out of term, but I think we're proposing a balanced budget, and we expect to continue to have these discussions. I know staff didn't expect to be able to turn the switch on and change this overnight, so I think to the discussions that were mentioned earlier about a focus committee or a steering committee and infrastructure committee, I think that's going to be the the challenge and the work for them would be my suggestion.
Okay.
Commissioner, I might add
All right.
Yes. That, I mean, the the one quick area, I guess, is to increase the amount of debt, though I think I've heard from the commission pretty clear that we are supposed to keep that amount at a level position. You know, as a I mean, we can afford to issue debt based on the amount of the number of mills we have. But as Ms. Monashon has reminded us in our recent discussions, our percentage of debt to our overall budget is higher than we really want it to be. So I have not, I don't move this number on the debt. I work, we're very hard with staff, and they do a good job of coming back to keep me within the parameter of the amount of money we're spending annually. That way, in the future, as the value of those mills go up, you can redirect the the mills dedicated toward debt to either reduction in the mill rate or over into a different operating area where we cash fund. So I I just, I am operating that way with debt. That's the only source of money I could grab now and and start to bump up where we're at on streets.
Well, that that provides some clarification to that to me on that. So thank you both for for your your answers to that. Under General Services, I'm on the Capital Cash Projects first page, the disparity study in 2023. Can you give a little bit more indication on what that study is for for our viewing audience? As, yeah, than than what we received earlier?
Certainly. So the disparity study is tied directly with a a study that is done with the city of Kansas City, Missouri. They conduct an evaluation of contractors and vendors that are available across the Kansas City metro area. And they look at it for total, so if we're looking at it specifically in terms of who could bid on projects to do that work, which is the primary focus of how they do that. They'll set out and say, okay, how many total contractors there are, and then they break it down by minority owned, women owned, disadvantaged businesses. And then they're able to come back with that and provide percentages in our metro area to say of all the contractors, this is how many falls into each one of the categories that I listed above. That gives you legal justification to then move forward when we do a bid to put on there to say, okay, here's the goals that you need to hit. So if we're going to do a $20 million project, and we say you need to have minority business enterprises in it at the tune of 16%, because we know from that disparity study based on the type of work we're doing, you know, maybe it's heavy in concrete, or maybe it's high in building materials or or whatever you have, high in electrical work or something like that. The disparity study tells us how many contractors in each of those areas there are, and then it would be assumed a right thing or fair that this percentage goes to women owned businesses or and such like that, and that's how that works. But so to enforce that on a legal document, you have to do it in this type of way. And this would be our percentage of paying that and trying to do it in coordination with K C M O.
Got it. So the 337.5, is that our portion, or is that going, how is that, is that our portion of it?
Melissa, do you know? Or Reggie?
Yeah, that that is our portion.
Our portion. Sorry, Reggie.
Okay, how much would Kansas, do you know how much Kansas City, Missouri? Okay, how much would Kansas, do you know how much Kansas City, Missouri's portion would be?
I don't have that information. I'm sorry, Commissioner. I can get it for you if you'd like.
Okay.
So that's all I know.
Right, and I, I totally get it. Um. But I also in, know the importance of uh, a lot of our. Making sure that we're hitting our numbers with regards to minority women-owned business participation and I'd certainly uh, encourage us if there's a way to move that into twenty twenty-two. Um, we've gone without a disparity study for how long? When was the last time we had a disparity study done?
It's probably back twenty fourteen or something. I mean, it, it's been quite a few years. Now, we, we don't really have the ability to move it up, Commissioner. This is done in coordination with KCMO. So we have to follow their next cycle as to when they're going to do it.
Okay.
We're, we're just jumping on with them as part of it.
Okay, fair, fair enough, fair enough. Um. The sidewalk uh. Gap program, the neighborhood curb sidewalk repair, I'm under public, public works. Page five. Um. Twelve thirty-one and twelve ninety-one. Um, is that the fifty-fifty program? Uh, does the fifty-fifty program fall into one of those categories? I guess is the right question. And, and some other, can you also give some more detail on to, to those two line items? Jeff, is that you or? I'm sorry, did I miss something?
Jeff, I think he's looking to see what it is, Commissioner.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Take a second here.
Not a problem. And while I'm at it, Melissa, I want to talk about NRSA uh, when we get done with that. So and, and then I'll be done, Mayor. I'm sorry.
Uh, Commissioner Johnson, I'm not exactly sure if the fifty-fifty program falls within that gap program. I don't think it does. And the fifty-fifty was cut last year and this year. Um, so can I look into that and, and get back to you?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Melissa, the NRSA, so that, so we're all coming up on a conclusion of that in twenty twenty-two, right?
Is correct, Commissioner.
Uh, could you give any, any more for our listening audience, kind of what those items would include for these remaining few years?
Yeah, and I do have, um, I would also probably ask Angel if she's ready to jump in as well. So um, currently this year we are working on um. Uh, work within Clifton Park and um, there's currently projected some changes to the. Um, the playground area um, removal of a historic road that has gone through the, the property. And some new um, pavement for parking. Um, as well as we're also looking at possible improvements to City Park North. Um, just, there's several things that we're working through right now, but Angel, do you want to go ahead and talk about what you're seeing right now on your end as you've worked with Welda and I?
Yep, sure. Uh, thanks, Melissa. You pretty much covered that. Um, you know, the projected projects for this year, we are. Kind of trying to rework through some of that, but you're right, you know, it's um, doing some work there in the parking lot. Uh, we are going to install a new playground there at Clifton and also um, improve and add more sidewalk. Infrastructure around the park. And as far as City Park North goes, um, we are still pretty um, early in the planning stages for, for that project.
Okay, well, this is unrelated to the CMIP. I will say this. Uh, we've got to figure out a way to keep, keep those uh, those, those properties uh, from being vandalized. And I don't know what the answer is to that. Um, I, I don't know. I don't know cameras are a part, should be part of that. Uh, we've got to, I mean, as soon as we're putting up new infrastructure. Uh, we've got people coming in tagging and, and, you know, devaluing this, this multimillion dollar investment into our community. It's not just that city park. Um, uh, it's at other parks as well, but clam being one of them, uh, you know, so I just, it helped, helped me to think about. What we can do and if we need to have, and I'm sure we need to have a separate meeting, but I just can't talk about the NRSA without. Talking about the fact that we've got this problem as well. So with that, I will yield the floor, Mayor, uh, back to the next person. Thank you.
Commissioner, I do, would say that um, you might want to talk to Commissioner Markley about our. Um, committee that works on litter and illegal dumping because we've also picked up graffiti this year. And um, yes, we do have a long ways to go with that and it's been a particularly awful struggle the last year and a half or so, so. Um, but definitely would love to talk to you further offline.
Right, thank you.
Commissioner Johnson, I think I do have an answer. If you look at that neighborhood curb sidewalk repair line item. At the hundred and twenty-five thousand and starting in twenty twenty-two, I believe that is the fifty-fifty program.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you. Appreciate it, Jeff.
Welcome.
Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'll pick up with that um, fifty-fifty program. That was a great segue from Commissioner Johnson. As I go back to the list that the administrator put up earlier, I think I needed to maybe clarify. Um, you know, just what my priorities are. I would say with that fifty-fifty program, it is taxing. For a lot of the communities that I serve to take advantage of that because you have super seniors in some of these neighborhoods who need. Uh, sidewalks and curbs done. Even though they keep their homes up. So uh, as I go back and look at the direction needed list, that's what I wanted to say, not only the street repair. And maintenance for me as a priority. And the bridges, but also curbs and sidewalks. So I would certainly be asking for more money. To be put into that line if a hundred and twenty-five thousand is all we have for the entire city. Um, I would also, before I forget, like to join that conversation concerning the need to identi- identify. These vandals who are costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars. By as Commissioner Johnson noted, tagging um. New infrastructure, new buildings uh, in our parks and wreck. Uh, I'll take this opportunity again to our listening audience to let them know that already in the budget, there is money. For persons who can help us identify these people who are the vandals. So uh, I would love to uh, speak with Commissioner Markley and any of the other commissioners about some way. To get that message out. I think I mentioned to someone, we need our own uh, UG most wanted. And people can identify and give us information anonymously, but, but that has to be done. Uh, the other thing that I'm looking at in this direction needed list has to do with safety and so I would go next to these. Uh, streetlight projects, there are. Streetlights that have been out for almost two years in uh, the Fairfax area. Um, and so you're talking about not only the ambience. The addition to it or the loss of it, but also it's a safety issue not to have good lighting. Even with a lot of the lights that are working, they're very dull and dim. And crime. Goes to dark places. So the better we can make our lighting. That's going to serve the ambiance factor and, and more importantly, the safety factor. The radio replacement we have to do. Um, so I would rate that next. Um, I would like more information about any backlogs we may have relative to what the CSI crime lab does. I'm a fan of. The show, The First Forty-Eight, so I know how important it is to um. Get information immediately on crimes and I guess that would include processing evidence. So I don't know. Where we are in terms of backlog for what we uh, have in that area. So I look forward to the presentation that the police will come in. I will segue with the um, issue that's been brought up about the. Having a substation or new police station somewhere in the northeast area. I supported that concept and still do really as part of a bigger. Development project. So when um. Our force comes forward with the presentation for the CSI lab. I would like to know, and they can give this to me offline, doesn't matter. What the numbers are, at least in my district, for major crimes and we can define what that is later. I want to work with circumstances as they now are. If major crimes have gone up. Then that would support um. Looking at a, a, a building, new facility. If they've gone down, less so. So that's where I am on that. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes, thank you, Mister Mayor. I apologize. Last, last comment uh, from me from tonight. Um, I, I just want to quickly. Support what Commissioner Townsend was saying uh, regarding sidewalks. You know, the fifty-fifty program isn't, is. A good program for a lot of people and a lot of communities. But let, you know, let's say for my community, for my district, you know, a lot of it is heavily renters. It's a lot of people who are renting. They may not have the wherewithal or the passion to. Put in the investment of replacing sidewalks and working together as a neighborhood as a. Long-term, regular neighborhood would. And so, and it, you know, like I said, the fifty-fifty program is a amazing program and it's good for certain places in our community. But for those concerning Commissioner Townsend's community and the community I represent, you know. Increasing that funding for those types of communities that may not. Pertain or may not want to hold on to that. Or participate in that fifty-fifty program. So it's just. Something to keep in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We are bubbing up against seven o'clock. Um, I'm just going to offer, I know there's more work for us to do. And as we have discussed before, um, the commission members will be. Uh, uh, joining uh, separate committees to look at specific infrastructure needs. And there is a steering committee of volunteers. And those are uh, Commissioner Bynum, Commissioner Philbrook, Commissioner McCarron and Commissioner Ramirez. And, and, and myself. And uh, we will be scheduling a meeting for early next week. So uh, Anna from my office will be reaching out to you tomorrow. And we will try and get a meeting scheduled early next week. And for that steering committee that will then to give uh, direction to the individual committees. Uh, will be identifying kind of the scope of the work for each committee. That is identifying the questions and topics, uh, the sequence of topics. Set objectives, what are we really, really reaching for here? What do we need to, to come out of our, our work to bring back to the entire commission? And again, we'll be looking at what are some of the emergency needs that is for funding uh, for infrastructure? And then we would look at what would be urgent needs, that is uh, things that would be five or six years have to be resolved. Or solved for, or they will become emergency needs. And then ultimately we'll take a longer term view to twenty, twenty-five years out, just to have an understanding. Of what we kind of revenues uh, or funding we need to get. And then of course, we will be. Exploring different funding opportunities, which would include enterprise funds which already exist. Um, assignment of tax revenues or perhaps uh, federal grants. Uh, or loans. So that's what we're going to be doing and I think we are, we'll get together early next week as possible. And then give our, get our directions and then pass those on to individual committees. Um, Doug, is there anything else that you want to uh, describe for the process moving forward?
I think when we come back in the next meeting, Mayor, we will try to address the questions or. Provide additional information on the areas that were left outstanding for tonight. And, and that'll be our, our next step as we move forward to um. Finalizing the, the spreadsheets, which will go into the, the final budget. Um, and, and if there's some other opportunities we talked about, about ways we. Obviously, we heard a lot of emphasis towards streets and some other things tonight, but. I don't know that I have a, it, I mean, that would probably be more, we'll talk about if we come up with any strategies for that to look forward as we move through the budget process. But I don't have anything else, Mayor.
Again, thank you all for your hard work and commission for excellent questions and discussion. We will see you in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.